That's a good way to start, isn't it? With that being said, I will call our city council listening session to order. It is Monday, March 17th. Thank you all for being here. We have the following people pre-registered to talk tonight. We have Ronald Clifton. Is Ronald here? I don't see him, Ronald, yet. Jeffrey Prager. Robert, I see you. You're here. Mary, I see you. There she is. Lawrence Levitin. All right. And you haven't signed up as well.
I did.
And your name?
Dennis Bionfeld.
Dennis, if Ronald or Ronald, excuse me, and Jeffrey don't make it, we'll get to you. But we're going to push them to the back of the list right now. But that puts us at about five people in five minutes each, and I just want to make sure that everybody gets a decent chance to talk. So why don't we start with Robert? Come on up. Yep, you're up first, man. You know the drill. Identify yourself, and we've got about five minutes per speaker, so we can make sure that everybody gets a chance to talk. So good evening, live.
Hello, council. My name's Robert Coleman. I wanted to talk today about public transportation and parking at the new Community Health and Wellness Center. When I was looking, I've talked to council member Mua briefly about this, but the schematic for the new Community Health and Wellness Center is quite inconvenient when it comes to public transit. For some of the bus stops that people would be arriving from throughout the city to the site, they would have to walk 1,000, 1,200 feet to get to the main entrance. And it really seems like the layout of the site is not like transit riders are an afterthought, for sure. When, like, a lot of, when I go to a site that I've never been to on transit, like, I look around, and if I, when the new Health and Wellness Center is there, I look and I see, you know, glass windows, back wall. I don't see an entrance, right? You have to walk all the way around. And if you have, like, if it's raining, if it's snowing, then that's quite a while to walk. There's no, like, you can't put a bus shelter, like, on the northeast corner, because it's like a, it's a free right. You can't put a shelter there to block vision. And I think that it's, it being an afterthought is really a big issue when you guys consider that it seems like you guys are having a parking problem. And when it comes to the ways that you guys are incentivizing people to use transportation to reach the Community Health and Wellness Center, it seems that, like, all of the eggs are in the driving basket, right? There's, there is a sidewalk. There is, like, outdoor bike parking, but that's like the minimum that city code requires. But what you do have is a bunch of free parking. And we all know that free parking isn't actually free. Like, when people like me, we take the bus, we walk, we bike to different businesses in Bloomington. The cost of that parking, we pay it no matter what, because it's factored into the rent of the building. It's factored into the cost of the goods and services that we spend at those places. And it's an equity problem, right? Because even though we are the people who, either, like, we choose to not drive, or we can't afford to, we're forced to pay for that anyway. And that cost is going to be factored into the, the day passes, the cost of the rooms at the Community Health and Wellness Center. And I think that cost recovery on the parking, charging for parking, you know, maybe it's 50 cents, 75 cents an hour, and instead of charging that to, like, the day pass or the building, or the room cost, spreading that to the people who actually use the parking. Because the way that it's currently working is that there is an incentive to drive, but there's, like, a negative incentive for people to do anything other than that. So the people who are doing the right thing, who walk, who aren't using your parking, you know, isn't taking that expense from the taxpayers of the cost of the parking, they aren't using it. We're doing the right thing by walking, we're biking, carpooling, you know, taking a senior shuttle. And we're, we're, it's disincentivizing that. And I think that if you guys, I'm not sure exactly what the situation is with the property acquisitions, like, it kind of seems like maybe buying some of those properties to move the parking there and just to have more space on the site. I think that it's a real blind spot to not be considering, hey, this site is going to have the most transit that it has ever had, like, at least since the 90s, as far as I can tell, with Network Now by the time that this opens. And I think that it's a real blind spot. I really hope that you guys will, before moving forward with buying these properties, to really think about, hey, if we charge for parking, the demand will be lower, and you don't have to build as much parking. And it will be more equitable, because you will be, instead of charging that parking to everyone, no matter what they use, no matter if they, if they can't afford it, actually charging it to people who choose to drive, maybe, you know, they'll decide, hey, I don't want to take, maybe we won't take two cars. We'll, we'll take the extra five minutes to go home, pick up somebody, instead of taking two cars to the Community Health and Wellness Center. Or like, hey, we, we live, like, three blocks away. Do we really want to spend, you know, a couple bucks on parking? Maybe we'll decide not to do that. We'll decide to walk, right? And I, I think that it seems like a real missed opportunity.
Just one quick question here, because we're right at time here. So I've not ridden the bus there. Obviously, I can walk from my house. But, I mean, the bus stops are basically at 90th and Penn on those four corners, correct? At various spots. And so, I mean, is your suggestion to turn the building, to move the bus stops, to?
That would be tricky.
All would be tricky.
I know. It, the best way to do it is if, like, there was, like, a vestibule, where, like, we could stand there. It's climate-controlled. We can watch to see if the bus comes, and then quickly jump out. Like, there's a door there.
So not necessarily move, not necessarily move the building or the bus stop, but maybe other companies?
Some way for us to wait there, right? Like, the current, yeah.
Yeah. And, yeah, we'll pass that out, we'll share that with our folks on the design team, and?
Mr. Mayor, we did actually have a conversation about that, I think, a couple of meetings ago, and it was brought up. Just the idea that the, that, from the, the street side, it doesn't look like you can get in anywhere, because it's all the way on the other side. And so I know we've taken that, that feedback before, so appreciate that.
Thank you much. Mayor.
Hi, I'm ready.
You are ready for you.
Ready for. So what is missing in the proposed Health and Wellness Center is the acknowledgement that people are composed of body, mind, and spirit, not just body, physical. It seems to be the emphasis on the current status of the project. There's already more than enough emphasis on body fitness. Or maybe it would like more rightly be called the Health and Fitness Center. What I'm getting at is, it's called the Health and Wellness. Wellness implies the whole human, not just an emphasis on physical, which certainly is what's happening right now. So I represent our group, the boutique. It's made up of artisans or crafters who use their skills that have been developed over their lifetime to create beautiful and useful objects that they share with others, through their sales. Their efforts provide physical, mental, and emotional benefits. The U.S. Surgeon General has identified as an epidemic isolation and loneliness among senior citizen population. Not just among senior citizens, but main, but very largely an issue in the senior citizen population. Involvement in the boutique does much to counteract that isolation and loneliness with what is provided: socialization, satisfaction, creative stimulation, whether as an artisan, volunteer, or a customer. The customers benefit. We might be the only person that this customer talks to all day. So what we're asking for is assurance of more space than what is currently being proposed in the new building. Our current room at Creekside is about 800 square feet. What is being proposed is not even 10% of that. So we are not happy. We want and need more square footage to function, as we have for more than 40 years, completely run by volunteers. And that is what I have to say.
Thank you.
But we take five minutes.
You didn't take five minutes. I appreciate brevity. I like that. So, Robert.
Quick question. With regards to the boutique, are you open, or have you thought about how people that maybe weren't just trying to sell their stuff could utilize that space? As an example, one of my kids' favorite stores is Michael's. And they do lots of arts and crafts, but I don't know that they'd be interested in selling anything, but they may be interested in using a similar type of space to do those types of things, those crafting activities. Have you thought about trying to envision or expanding how that could be used throughout the day and with other groups as well?
Teaching crafts?
Teaching or just providing a space to do it?
They're, they're, it's a group right now at Creekside for crafting. They have all kinds of supplies. And of course, it's for seniors.
Yeah, and that's, that's my thought, is there's a lot of people that enjoy arts and crafts outside of seniors. Expand and broaden that, as well as make it maybe not just specific to the boutique sales portion, but also to the things that you talked about, is the socialization, the, the mental health aspects of it, to broaden that base so that it wasn't as particularly narrowly focused of a use in that one area. You don't have to answer right, right now. I'm just throwing it out there, because I think there's a wider audience for that type of use that may help create that space, if we can see that that can be a wider audience used by more hours in the day. So I think that's one of the things we've been looking at, is utilization throughout the day. So, just, just throwing it out as an idea.
So we've got two years, over, over two years, to look into that.
Yeah.
I mean, in the interim, we're going to have a small little kiosk over at City Hall.
Well, it's very good, Al, sorry.
Yeah, thanks. I'm curious, I don't know if you know the answer to any of this. So, a big fan of the boutique. I've been over there myself, I bought some stuff for Christmas and everything. We also have a space here in Civic Plaza that I deal, it's completely underutilized for sales and everything, and it's down there where the artistry teams are. So I'm very interested in seeing how we can do something really innovative there. That's one of the ideas that I've pitched to the Parks and Rec team. But I'm curious, do you know, do you know, like, do you have the numbers on the boutique, since you all participate in it so much? I've not seen them, and I'm just curious about them. How many people buy, what, how many sales are done every month? You know, that kind of thing. Do you have any of that? I, I'm just, I'm assuming you do. I'm just curious if it's been shared.
Yes, we do have that.
Yeah, I would love to see it, if you don't mind.
Available.
Yeah, I know you've sent previous emails to city council. If you don't mind sending that information, it would be helpful just to have an understanding of, like, what the actual transactions and activities are. Okay, that would be very helpful. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks for your time. So we're, thank you. Appreciate it. Lawrence.
Greetings, welcome.
Greetings. Greetings, Mayor Bussey and council members. My name is Lawrence Levitin. My wife and I recently moved from Stevens Point, Wisconsin, where we lived for many, many years. And currently, we live across from Dred Scott Fields, and are just a few minutes from the river, and have access to nature, lovely dog walks, pickleball, and a wonderful coffee shop. The quality of life is terrific here. We have taken advantage of public transportation. We took the light rail to see the links and the finals in the fall. About 10 days ago, I took the Orange Line downtown, see if I can do without my glasses, to see a concert at the Presbyterian Church on Marquette Street. It was quick, it was easy, and as a senior, it was cheap. The only issue was that I had to drive 15 minutes to get there from Dred Scott. I would have loved to be able to walk five minutes from my house to get downtown, but currently, I cannot do that. In Stevens Point, I was involved in transportation advocacy. I served on the Bike-Ped Commission. We have a good bus system there, and I'm an avid cyclist. And I like to say that I can get anywhere in town in Stevens Point in five to 10 minutes. So it's kind of a learning curve and an adjustment, moving to Bloomington. To get to Minneapolis or St. Paul, everything is 30 minutes. And that seems to be the minimum in the car. And then, of course, getting from small-city driving shops to big-city shops. I grew up in Chicago, but nevertheless, I've sort of lost those. So we avoid 494 as much as we can. I recently had coffee with Alderman Nelson to discuss this, and it was very informative and wonderful at Perks, one of our favorite places. But I do realize that Network Now is in the final stages of implementation. I'm a little bit late to the game. We were trying to sort of get the lay of the land in the fall, and I didn't know that they were doing all this public commentary, and it's closed. Alderman Nelson directed me to your January meeting, where Mr. Harrington presented the final stages. And I did send him an email and council member Pacheco, who I think represents our part of town. I haven't heard back from them. But my question to the mayor and the council is whether these decisions are final and set in stone. I'm aware that there's a shortage of drivers, and that the route along Auto Club Road was not generating sufficient revenue or traffic for metro transit, especially with the COVID interruption. And that experienced planners had to make very tough decisions about what services to expand and which ones to eliminate. But based on my short time here, I've observed that seven months out of the year, Dred Scott hosts hundreds of folks daily. Scoop's Ice Cream must have had hundreds of folks on opening day on Friday. I was one of them. And as a musician, I enjoyed their Favaratti flavor. It was delicious. And if Pig Ate My Pizza opens, we talked about this, I don't know if that's indeed happening. Our family are very excited about it. That little mall will be a destination place at West Bloomington. So, I mean, currently, it's a transportation desert. On the big metro transit map, it doesn't look like a lot. But in, in the fall, I took, rode my bike to play pickleball at Westwood, and it's a good hike on a bike. I can have a cyclist, so I can do it in 20 minutes. But other than that, you have to have a car. So my question again is, with the right kind of promotion, can us service be marketed to kids, seniors, athletes, and families to make it more attractive as an option to move through Bloomington, to get to these popular destinations? They talk about this five-minute walkability from your house. I stare longingly at the metro, the red sign in front of our house, but it says, "No longer in service." So this would be a goal that would provide transportation equity and options to those without cars, or those who choose not to have a car. And especially in our current environment, where we're really promoting different ways of getting places. So, you know, I know it might be moot at this point, but I'm just hoping it's something that can still be considered. So thanks for your time.
Well, thank you for your comments. And if you, if you watched that meeting in January, I think you heard this entire council pretty much echo exactly what you have been saying, in terms of more options needed in Bloomington. They need, metro transit just in general needs to pay more attention to our city for a variety of different reasons, and in a variety of different ways. And I think we, we spoke long and loud about that, and whether or not we made an impact, I'm not sure. I know that we were pretty united in that, and everybody had a say in it. But yes, you're right, they are well down the path right now for their, their, their planning, for their, their next rounds of changes, and how they're going to redo the routes and so on. We can continue our advocacy, but ultimately, this is a metro transit decision. And, and we'll continue. I just saw our council member at an event, and talked transit with him again last week. So he knows that Bloomington is watching this and is concerned about it.
Would it help if we, if I got a bunch of like-minded people together to come up with, I mean, something creative? You know, Dred Scott, something. I mean, it's a great name. Go across and look at that sign every day when we walk the dogs.
It never hurts. If you get like-minded folks together and start talking about possibilities, yes, it never hurts. Councilman Del Sander, very quickly here.
One of the things that I'm hoping, thanks, Mr. Mayor. One of the things I'm hoping that we can do is, I don't, if you remember that January meeting, we had a conversation about the micro-mobility functionality. They, they're looking at the 98th and Lindell area largely because it's a feeder to the Orange Line. But, you know, if that's successful, or, you know, there's opportunities for expansion there, and that area would be a great place to expand, even if it was for nothing else, other than getting you from that area to the 98th area, where then you could take the Orange Line downtown or something like that. So maybe we can be working through that as well. But I keep an eye on the micro-mobility pilot, see if we get some, some positive out of that, too. Yeah. Thanks.
Thanks for being here tonight. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
And we can tell you're from Chicago, because you called me Alderman.
Yes, exactly. We all knew what you meant.
Haven't heard that term in a while.
I don't see Ronald or Jeffrey yet.
Thank you.
Anybody Ronald or Jeffrey yet? I don't see them yet. Why don't you jump on up?
Dennis.
Dennis, come on.
Yeah, jump right back.
Come on, jump, Dennis. Come on. Did you just state your name for the record official?
Yes, Bionfeld. Mayor, council members. First time.
Welcome.
Wasn't really expecting to speak, but I just, I have a couple of issues I'd like to talk about. Number one is the new community system, and what appears to be the lack of functions for senior citizens. Some of the activities that are going currently at Creekside, I've used, several, I've used woodshop. Burns very good there, and helping me get through my wood projects. But, and I've done some senior exercises there. Every time I've been there, it's full. People are playing cards, different card rooms, exercise, yogas, carpenters, whatever the room. And I'm just kind of puzzled that there seems to be no conscious design for the senior citizens in the new community center. It's a great place for seniors to get together, and it's, I think it's a big mental, physical exercise, conversations carrying on, friendships, that type of thing. And I'm just kind of curious, anybody done any demographics, on how many people are, would use the fitness center, the new fitness center? I'll just address it that way. I'm old, silver sneakers. All the fitness centers, I don't pay for. It's free. I want to show my little card, and I can go and do what I want to, swim, do some, use some machines, whatever. So I guess, and I addressed this with our past city manager, I valued you at one meeting one time, about the same thing. Who's going to use the fitness center? How many people there? Well, is the city going to have to subsidize it to keep it going? Those kind of thoughts. But I really like to see more facilities for seniors. Play cards, talk, whatever. Do exercises. I know you got a fitness center, but I'm, I'm, I'm handicapped, and I've limited to what I can do for physical fitness. I do what I can. I swim, I go in the water, I do some elliptic machines, so forth. So that's my concern about the new community center. Second concern is, I'd like to know how involved is the city with the Veterans Memorial? Is the city connected to that?
Very connected, yeah.
I'm a veteran, and when I first read about it, I thought, or then I emailed, and somebody called me back from the committee, and it seems like it's, I don't, I hate to say this, like an elitist. It's only open to several hundred people, few hundred people, not several, a few hundred people. There's only room for enough dog tags that the veteran or the veteran's family has to pay $350 to be honored on this thing. I don't need to be honored on it. My family and friends know I was a Vietnam veteran, served four years. I'm good with that. But it is, I know a lot of veterans that are physically handicapped, they're disabled from military action, that live in the city. I did the last demographics, the last census, there's, first of all, let's go to, about 20, 25% of the city are senior citizens. That's a big chunk. I think we need to be looking at our seniors. It's a veteran community. Maybe we're out of that stage sometime. I've been here for 60 years. My parents were here for, since they moved to Morehead back in the early 60s. Grew up there. My brothers grew up, they're here, the Kennedy graduates. But anyway, I'm very concerned about Veterans Memorial. Seems like nobody will talk about it. I try to contact people, just have a conversation. There's 4,000 veterans that live here. I don't know if they're, someone who deceased out in the last census. 4,000.
It's been my experience that the folks working on the, the Veterans Memorial are above-the-most talkative people in town, to be honest. They will talk to anybody at any point. They, they had a booth that
I've heard that.
They had a booth at the farmer's market, I think, just about every weekend this past summer, and we're always talking.
One of your close friends, Pamela Palmer, is an acquaintance. And she's been very, very vocal in city government. But anyway, she said that, too. She knows some of the people. I said, Pam, I send emails, I request a phone call.
So I'm, I'm not sure who you might be contacting, but I tell you what.
Whoever's on the, on the, your little thing in the?
Sorry, if you, if you signed in there, if you got your name there, I will, I'll, I'll talk to those folks, because, again, I know them very well. And I will tell them you'd like to have a conversation.
The origins of this thing is, I know it's the, to reference a memorial, but?
We will, again, if your contact information?
Get on it.
Dennis, if your information is there, I, we will pass that on to our, our folks there, and I will make sure they give you.
Thank you for addressing that. And again, think about the 20, 25% of the citizens that are in Bloomington are seniors. And when I look at the plan for the community center, I don't see anything for seniors.
We, again, we can provide you that list of, of activities that will transfer
That'd be great.
From inside to the new Health and Wellness Center.
I know.
We can get you, we, again, we got your contact information.
Yep, my user is good.
Yep, send it out here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We have one person who came in late. Are you hoping to speak tonight?
Yeah.
Come on up.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and talk.
If you just identify yourself, then.
My name is Elise Morales.
That's right, Cindy.
Elise Morales.
Very nice to meet you.
So I don't know, probably you guys remind, remember me from past weeks or months. I came regarding my neighbor issue. Right now, it's, everything's going much better. You know, six years of horror, just a lot. One of my issues today is that because of my neighbor being harassing me a lot, I feel like he is using the city to harass me back. I've never thought of us, like, moving out, because I lived here for 23 years, and this is going to be 24 years in Bloomington. But, you know, it's like, if I have visitors, visitors, like, they come to visit me, they only tell me that I only can have four vehicles in my home. I understand that. But every year, I'm just like, since everything happened with my neighbor, I've been receiving letters from the city, hey, you have too many vehicles in your property. You know, and it's just so hard, and it's kind of like frustrating for me, because I don't know what else to do. It's like, last time I came to the city, and I was like, yeah, I do have a visitor. I was like, why do you think it's my vehicle? He's only staying for three months. And I was like, instead of you calling me, instead of you sending me, you have my contact. I was, instead of you sending me a letter, letting me know about the vehicle, you should have contacted me before and asked me if that vehicle was mine or not. You know? And I feel the same issue again this year. I received this letter today regarding the vehicles that I have on my, on my property. I do have a big family. You know, Hispanics are big. I have six kids. Two of my older ones are driving. It's my husband, me, my mom, and my dad. You know, so it's just kind of hard not having those vehicles for us to drive everywhere, to work, to school, you know? So it's just, I don't know what else to do. Sometimes I feel like I just want to give up, sell the house, and move out of Bloomington. Because I don't know what else to do. You know, I took all this big battle regarding my neighbor, and did all the property things that I had to do. You know, 17, 17 firecrackers aiming to my house, and the only thing he got is a slap on the back of disentangled contact. Yeah, it's fine. I took him again to court, harassment order again. You know, he was finally served. He got arrested, he got served. Right now, it's been seven months of peaceful since September to right now, it's been so peaceful. But I know that every time, you know, when summer starts, I know something's going to happen. You know, and it's, there's a time that I'm, I don't know what else to do with the city.
Yep. Well, I, I can say, without specific details, I can say with very strong confidence that those two issues are not related. I, I can say that with confidence. That's not where, the way our city staff works, that's, that is not, that's just not the case.
Well, I did, I did order, you know, like, the, I think you go, like, online and try to order, like, the, like, the, kind of like the report, police report, but it's like Bloomington reports. And I did receive a lot of emails saying that, you know, my neighbor this, my neighbor that, you know, she has too many vehicles.
If he's calling in, it, it's not the city retaliating if he is calling in. I mean, if, if he's calling in with legitimate concerns, whether you've got too many vehicles, or, you know, dogs running for you, or whatever it is. I mean, if there's a legitimate concern, neighbors often do call in, and I'm sorry to hear that, you know, if he's using that as a retaliation, that's, that's not good. I agree with that. But at the same time, our, our city But at the same time, our, our city staff looks at each case individually and they're, I mean, we have rules. We have the ordinances that we have to follow. Four vehicles per house is, is town across the, the city. And I agree. I mean, if you've got an extended family and two kids driving already, it's, uh, it makes it a little bit more difficult. But it's, uh, it, it is the ordinance that we have across the city to ensure that we have, that we don't have cars with, or we don't have houses with many, many cars affecting their neighbors, affecting the neighborhood. Now, if you, again, if it's your neighbor calling in and reporting you.
But sometimes it is.
Sorry about that.
Because like I'm driving or even like I see in my own, you know, block, I see like a lot of vehicles and their properties. And I see like another block with a lot of vehicles. But you know, I see every year the same vehicles there, but in my case it's like, okay, they sent me this letter. I move one car out and I have to like sell a car and tell my son, you'll have to find a ride to go to work.
Why don't I have, we, we gotta get going downstairs. We gotta get adjourned here, but why don't I have, I'm gonna have, uh, we'll have folks from our community health, uh, department. They're the ones who look into this kind of thing. Why don't they give you a call and we can have a, they can have a conversation with them about, uh, ways that, some workarounds that might be possible or ways that we could avoid, uh, issues where, again, too many vehicles and the neighbor calling in and all that.
Yeah, because it's like I asked last time the city, I was like, how do you guys think that vehicle that's in front of my house, it's mine? It's not even registered into my name. It's not even registered to that address, that place. I was like, just because it's parked in front of my house, you think it's mine?
And, and it's a good question to have with.
He's like, yeah, we don't know if it's yours. It's like, well, it's not mine. It's like, they just come and they park here.
So you, you, it's your neighbors parking in front of your house?
Um, just like people that, um, I'm not going to say because I have a neighbor that has a, um, company and his employees come and park there and there. Um, but the city already knows about it. They already talked to them, you know? They already had like an agreement with our neighbor. Next day, your neighbor's like, hey, can you let me park in your spot? And the neighbor said, fine. You know, it's just like.
We will have, why don't we have community help give you a call and see if we can have a conversation on this, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for listening to me.
So we're two minutes over. We gotta get downstairs. I look for a motion to adjourn tonight. Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all very much for being here this evening. Thanks much for your input. Uh, thanks for the thoughtful discussion. Let's get downstairs and